All right, you're up.
Okay, welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Kennybunk, Town of Kennybunkport Planning Board. Now, the attendance looks a little slim at the moment, which we have, the two, you two alternate guys are on. Scott is missing for some reason. Two people have the day off. And there's Ed Francis showing up.
Ed?
Hey, Ed.
Azor.
So, anyway, someone caught COVID in the Azors, so.
That's a great place if you're gonna do it.
If you're gonna do it, I guess.
I guess.
Anyway, so Nina and Larry are not going to be here, but ideally Scott will be. And we, since quorum is three, we have four. We're in good shape. So first off is the approval of the minutes. And so I think they're fine.
Make a motion to approve the minute.
As modified by Larry.
As modified by Larry.
Yes. Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. So I'm in favor. You guys are in favor?
In favor?
Ed, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Which brings us to the agenda. And the first item is item 230801 Seaside Hotel Associates, DBA non-antum. And Tina is here, so.
Good evening.
Proceed.
Well, hello, everybody present and online. Thanks so much for hearing from us once again. We're here before you to ask permission to be able to make some modifications to our back lawn to allow for safety and drainage as well as, that will obviously encompass some of the repair to our seawall as well.
Yeah, and I saw a interchange with your neighbor.
We did, yes.
That seems to have been solved.
Yes.
Which is really nice.
It was wonderful. They just, they weren't understanding exactly the scope of the work, which it was, is understandable to make sure that it wasn't gonna negatively impact their property, which in fact it doesn't, it's gonna be helping their drainage issue by solving some of our problems.
All right. Beyond that, Nina has agreed that she's going to, she's all set to write the finding effects for the next meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
Have any questions, you guys?
I do not.
How about our only resident civil engineer over there?
I was just checking the notes to see if there was anything else outstanding.
Your mic is nowhere near your mouth.
There we go. Mike's next to Mike. I was just looking over last notes to see if there is anything outstanding. There were a couple of things about a tax deed and book number. Was that all solved?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no other questions then?
Okay. So this is a public hearing, so.
About Ed.
Does Ed have any questions?
Oh, Ed, do you have any questions before I?
No, none at all. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to open a public hearing. Do I have anybody here would like to talk about this? Do I have anybody raising hands?
I do not see anyone raising hands.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll take a motion.
I move.
Okay.
I'll second.
You have to move, move approval.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that motion for approval.
Okay, so I'm gonna, once again, poll the board. I'm in favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
Yes.
Okay, so it's approved. We'll have a finding of facts read at the next meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Have a great evening.
Okay. That brings us to 54 River Road. Item 230803, 54 River Road. The Thomas McLean Trust, Jim Logan and Longview Partners is the agent, so.
Got a mat?
Once again, this is a public hearing. For starters, you can explain briefly what all of us know about this.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the board's attention again tonight, two weeks after we were first here. This is a simple lot line adjustment. It basically balanced a front additional amount of land that was added to number 54 River Road and the land that was accommodated by that swap was accounted for in the rear. That's depicted on this map as it was first shown to you. There have been no changes to that map. We confirmed and remapped the wetlands and confirmed the net density was still met on both lots. The lot line adjustment did not affect the leach bed site at all. A leach bed septic system design has been prepared for the lot consistent with the original approval, and that will be put on the street here shortly. No other permits are required from any other agency in order to do this. No, none of the abutters are even remotely affected by this land swap. So we're in the hopes that we can get our approval tonight through the public hearing. I will note that we made a few clerical or housekeeping type revisions, and predominantly it was Nina that, her comment was that we better tie the application to the old PBM subdivision name.
Yep.
So that we have adjusted strictly the portions of the application that referred to that. Other previously submitted data still viable. And I think that should take care of it, I hope. We provided also the two deeds that Nina referenced.
Yes, yeah, we saw that. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. You guys?
No questions?
No questions. Ed?
No, no questions. Thank you.
No more questions, okay. So, given that, I will once again open the public hearing and ask for anyone.
I don't see anyone to raise your hand.
So once again, I will close the public hearing. And given that, I will move that we approve this.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Ed?
In favor, yes.
Okay. So I have a finding of facts which I will read when we read all the findings of facts at the end of the.
That's perfect. If it's available, will you be signing that particularly tonight?
Yes.
I took the liberty of making four maps that are.
So we can sign that also?
Not Mylar because the registry doesn't accept Mylar anymore. The ordinance may require a Mylar submitted to the town, but the registry will not literally accept Mylars anymore. Am I correct?
I learn something new every day.
They want signed originals, not folded paper, okay? So we'll have four of them here, and I'll make sure one gets recorded. I'll make sure that one goes to Michelle so that it can be in the town file. Likely after the recording, the notification will come back to the tax office and we can go from there.
Okay.
We thank you.
Very good. So that brings us to the third item, item 230802 Old Cape Road.
Recording in progress.
Okay, and this is Mezzoland Development LLC. And Austin Fagan is the agent. Is that you?
Indeed.
Okay.
Good evening. All right, so. As you stated, the applicant is Mezzolian Development LLC. The proposed project is a one lot split from an existing 2.9 acre lot at the corner of Old Cape Road and Roberts Lane. The reason this project requires subdivision review is because the outsale lot shown on the plans was split from the property and sold within the past five years. Splitting the proposed lot will create a three lot subdivision. The existing parcel is wooded and has a single family home on it. The property is in the free enterprise zoning district. The proposed lot will be a single family home that will be served by a drilled well and private septic system. An onsite vernal pool assessment and wetland delineation has been completed by Mark Hampton Associates, and this project is not proposing any impacts to any of the natural resources. As part of this project, we are requesting a few waivers, one being high intensity soils. The reasoning for this is because we have provided a passing preliminary septic test pit that shows that septics are possible on site. And along with the wetland delineation, that shows us where all the hydroric soils are and close groundwater. So we're hoping that the board will consider waiving that. Hydrogeologic assessment, since we're only proposing one new septic system that will be outside of the well zones as shown on the plan. We're looking for a waiver on a stormwater management plan due to the minor impact that a single family home will have on the watershed. And originally, we had asked for a waiver on financial capacity. Since submitting the application on August 21st, I believe it was, the applicant has given me a letter of financial capacity from Bitterford and Savings, Bitterford and Saco Savings Institution. So we will no longer be asking for a waiver on that. Relatively straightforward project. As we know, this typically would be just a regular lot split, but due to the timeline, it's a subdivision, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
So you've got the joy of coming here twice?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I guess my only question, I was looking through the, somewhere in here, you had some very strange shaped lots in some of the places where you have this little piece going up.
Yep.
The road.
Mm-hmm.
Is that part of one, what, where, is that part of this lot, or is it something else?
So I, that's shown on the tax and assessing maps.
Yes.
Here, I'll steal this so I can go over to the plan and look at it with you. Thank you. So based on the survey that we have, this, the existing leg that you see on that property is the right of way for Roberts Lane. That is not attached to either of these lots at this point. So what you see shown on the actual plan, including the outsale lot, was the original lot. Since that time, the outsale lot has been sold and is no longer part of the subject parcel that's being split. So really, the only lots that are a part of this directly are Lot 1 and the remaining land of Pamela Hutchins.
Okay. Yeah, I just saw this extra little thing sticking up there and gee, that's not.
Fair enough. Good question to have.
Okay, so.
So the Kenneth Hutchins who signed the letter, is he in the outlot or some way in related to Pamela?
I believe he is related to Pamela. So there is an existing home on the remaining land of Pamela Hutchins. And I believe that the life estate, there was a release more or less that was signed by Kenneth with an understanding that this lot is being broken off. So the reason that we provided the release was because it is on the subject parcel. That was probably a long way of saying yes.
Okay, now this is not our usual splitting a lot within a subdivision because it wasn't a subdivision until you split the lot.
Correct.
So we don't have an original subdivision name that you're modifying?
Correct.
Okay. That's just, that's usually, that's the first thing we ask, that's what we ask Jim so that he makes sure he added the PBM to his, the name of his subdivision because. Okay, so you're just saying, you're calling it this, and that in fact encompasses what the outsell lot was anyway, so.
Correct.
So this is Lot 1, and the other two are Lot 0 and 0.5 or something, but okay.
Indeed.
All right, seems simple enough. Unfortunately, it does require two submissions.
Yep.
You know, preliminary and final.
Indeed.
The other question I had was, it says the open space will we retain by the owner of the remaining land? So is that Pamela or the outsell?
So that would be Pamela.
So Pamela, so what's the open space that's going to be retained?
The open space that's being retained is the hatch portion. Gonna steal this again. The hatch portion of the property that's shown on the western property line. So there are some proposed pins that you see with an A next to them for buffer pins. So more or less, it's a portion of land that will connect to all three parcels and will be more or less a no-cut forested buffer.
And it has the right percentage of the whole amount?
I believe so, yes.
Open space then?
Yep.
So it doesn't affect the new Lot 1?
Uh, no, it does not. There, it is connected to it.
They, they, they abut it.
At A, it's got an attachment there, but there was no open space on the Lot 1. It's just on the, the remaining land, okay.
Correct.
And what was the second? Okay. That was with the existing and the proposed, all right. All right, good. No other questions for me.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Ed, do you have any questions on this?
I just wanna understand that last comment about open space. You're gonna end up with three lots, as I understand it, each of which is gonna be a conforming lot. It's gonna meet the minimum requirements for space?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So you're not talking about some common land and cluster zoning? It's just that one of the lots has open space and each of the lots has sufficient open space?
The open space requirement that I think he's trying to get is the open space for the subdivision. And it happens, it's all part of the original land, but it's accessible from all three of the lots. Is that?
That is correct.
Stated correctly.
You're saying that the other two lots have, have an easement or access to land that is on the third lot?
Yes, they have easement. If you, it's not obvious on, that there's slashed area from like point, the point As are the, are the.
Yeah, so there is a cross-tatched area on the western side of, western and northern side of the parcel. We were proposing that that area would stay under the ownership of Pamela Hutchins, but it would be an easement for, for use by the members of the subdivision, if you will. More or less.
And that'll be captured on, that'll be captured on the deeds? Is that how you'll do it?
Uh, yes, we can do that.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Just, I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Never seen it done that way. Don't think I've ever seen it done that way.
Yeah, me too.
Where it's all on one.
This is unusual in that it isn't, it's only a subdivision.
Right.
More or less what this is creating is a wooded buffer, so this area will never be able to be developed.
Right.
In terms of open space, it's more or less just a conservation of land, if you will. Have you, these are three one acre lots, more or less. So in terms of the required amount of open space, there's not really a ton of functionality to what is required.
Right.
So we figured that keeping it as a preserved forested area would be ideal, excuse me, ideal.
I think that's great. I think I looked to Michelle for some guidance here, though. I thought each of the individual lots already had sufficient open space. That they have to have 20% open space, I thought. Maybe I'm wrong on that. And this seems to be above and beyond that.
Yeah, to your point, Ed, what the applicant is offering for the dedicated open space requirement is sufficient for what is in the subregs. So that's where I'd stand at that.
It's just a different approach of getting it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
This is initial, so accepted. Is that what we're looking for?
I guess.
We have a public hearing.
The plan looks pretty complete. I haven't gone through everything, but it looked very complete, I could tell.
So motion to accept the application?
Yeah. No, it's, accepted as complete.
Accepted as complete.
And we'll have, we'd have a.
A public next.
Public hearing in two weeks.
Then the subdivision. Got it.
So I'll.
So I'll make a motion to say it's complete.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, made and seconded. I'll vote in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Ed?
In favor.
Okay, so we'll see you in two weeks.
While we're at it, is, would this be an appropriate time to vote on the waivers that we're requesting? Or would that be prior to final approval?
It's something we would probably grant after, after the public hearing, but.
Okay.
We can, we will, we'll grant preliminary granting the waivers.
Okay.
For your preliminary thing, but I think I'd rather have a couple more board members here to, to say that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so we will, that is something we would do. It wouldn't, it would say, when, when, the answer, at the end of a preliminary, oh, you get, you get a letter from me.
Mm-hmm.
That says, "Looks good to us and we approved preliminary, approved these, and these waivers."
Yep.
And that's what, that's what you, that's all you get.
Sounds good to me.
The second time, we actually approve it.
Okay.
Sign, sign documents and all that.
Perfect.
So it's a high intensity soil survey.
Yep.
The geolo, hydrogeological and stormwater management plan.
Correct.
Right.
Awesome.
Sure, there's, those will no doubt be granted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a.
I want Larry here for that purpose.
Sounds good to me. Well, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And that brings us to three findings of fact.
Whoa, you might wanna stick around.
So if you have a digital copy, you can read it here tonight, and then we can have people come in and sign it if that works for you, or we can just wait until next time.
For which one? My friend.
For Jim's.
For Jim's. Well, why don't we, why don't we read theirs first and I will.
I'm the doc.
You're the doc. Of course, you're the doc.
The doc guy.
I'm nothing.
Well, somebody's gotta read Larry's.
I'll read Larry's.
Oh, you're the best.
I don't know about that, but, oh, God, how many pages did you print Larry?
No, no, it's not. Yep, see ya.
Do you care which ones first?
No, I don't.
Okeydoke. The space above is recirc, oh, sorry. Kennebunkport Planning Board Findings of Fact and Decision Application of Wah Wah Family Limited Partnership for 22 Agamanikis Avenue. Following site plan reviews pursuant to the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance held 16 August and on 6 September and on 20 September 23, and a public hearing held on 6 September and continued on 20 September 2023, the Kennebunkport Planning Commission makes the following findings of fact and conclusions and renders the following decision subject to the conditions enumerated below. Findings of fact are as follows. One, the owner of record and applicant is the Wah Wah Family Limited Partnership, care of Alex Bo with mailing address of 5 Wilderness Way, Kennebunk, Maine 040432. In a letter dated July 21st, 2023, owner of record authorized Atlantic Environmental LLC to act as an agent in this matter. Address of agent is 135 River Rose Woolwich, Maine 04579. The prob, three, the property has a street address of 22 Agamanikis Avenue, Kennebunkport, Maine 04046. Four, the property is identified as Map 30 Block 3, Lot 30 on the municipal tax assessor's maps. Five, the property is located in the Cape Porpoise East and Shoreland Zones. The project site is located entirely within the 250-foot shoreline setback dimension and Zone V2 per 1983 FEMA Firm MAP. Six, owner demonstrated legal interest in the property by providing a warranty deed for the property recorded in the York Registry County of Deeds Book 8116, pages 247 to 249, on December 26 and December 31, 1996. Seven, the applicant has submitted the application for the permit by rule required by the Natural Resources Protection Act to the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. Eight, applicant provided a copy of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit. Nine, applicant provided a copy of the letter for the Maine Historic Preservation Commission to confirming that no historic properties will be affected by the proposed undertaking. Ten, the existing property consists of a residential structure and associated infrastructure, including a dock and an existing stone and mortar retaining wall. The stone retaining wall has been in place since 1970 and possibly as early as 1956. The wall is in disrepair. Areas landward from the wall are eroding, and areas along the shoreline also exhibit erosion due to recent storm activity. The house is located less than 20 feet from the highest annual tide. Eleven, the property comprises approximately .45 acres, approximately 19,602 feet squared per information provided by the agent, and therefore is non-conforming. Since the lot is less than 40,000 square feet, lot coverage by buildings is 16% plus another 2% for other impervious cover. Twelve, in an application dated July 21st, 2023, and further updated on August 25th, 2023, and on September 13th, 2023, applicant proposes to increase height of a portion of the existing stone and grout wall by one foot by pinning a series of granite blocks to the top of the wall. Each granite block will measure approximately one foot high and two feet wide by six feet long. The granite blocks will be applied over approximately 100 feet length of the existing law, wall. Applicant also proposes to stabilize the existing wall and additional areas of the shoreline with riprap and plantings. Riprap approximately 8.5 feet high with an engineered slope of 1:1 will be placed along 120 feet of the existing wall. Riprap approximately 5.5 feet high also will extend northwards beyond the end of the wall, terminating at the property line. Plantings will further stabilize the top of the earth bank by reducing erosion issues. Thirteen, applicant requested no submission or performance waivers from the requirements of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance. Fourteen, pursuant to the requirements of Article 10 dot 10 dot A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings which would otherwise compel denial. The proposed use meets the definitions or specific requirements. A, the proposed use meets the definition or specific requirement set forth in the Land Use Ordinance and will be in compliance with applicable state or federal law, finding yes. B, the proposed use will not create fire safety hazards and will provide adequate access to the site or to the buildings on the site for emergency vehicles, finding yes. C, the proposed exterior lighting will not create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent public streets and is adequate for the safety of occupants or users of the site and will not damage the value and diminish the usability of adjacent properties, finding yes. Comment, no lighting will be added. D, the provisions for buffers and onsite landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, finding yes. E, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of a budding property as a result of noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust, glare, or other cause, finding yes. F, the provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking of vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and onto adjacent public streets will not create hazards to safety, finding yes. The proposed, G, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the value of adjacent properties, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding yes. H, the design of the site will not result in significant flood hazards or flood damage and is in conformance of applicable flood hazard protection requirements, finding yes. I, adequate provision is made for the disposal of wastewater or solid waste and for the prevention of ground or surface water contamination, finding yes. J, adequate provision is made to control erosion or sedimentation, finding yes. Comment. Erosion control measures have been provided in the application. K, finding adequate provisions have been made to handle stormwater runoff or other drainage problems on site, yes. The proposed water supply will meet the demands for proposed use for fire protection purposes, finding not applicable. M, adequate provision has been made for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances and materials as defined by state law, finding not applicable. N, the proposed use will not have an adverse effect on significant scenic vistas or on significant wildlife habitat which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding not applicable. O, the proposed use will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion, finding yes. P, existing off-site ways and traffic facilities can safely and conveniently accommodate the increased traffic generated by the development as far away from the development as the effects of the development can be traced with reasonable accuracy, finding not applicable. Oh, I love this part. When a proposed development will be located within the Shoreland Zone, a Resource Protection Zone, in addition to the requirements of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance Article 10, the townwide regulations and order. the townwide regulations in Article six, but form and standards for specific activities and land uses in Article seven, approval of the development will also require that the board make positive findings based on the information presented and that their proposed use, A, will maintain safe and healthful conditions, finding yes. B, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters, finding yes. C, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, water, not applicable. D, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife habitat, finding yes. E, will conserve shore cover as visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, finding yes. F, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan, finding yes. G, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use, finding yes. H is in conformance for the performance standard set forth in section five dot six, erosion and sedimentation control of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance, finding yes. Any negative finding by the board means that the application has been denied. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Article ten dot ten dot A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial and as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to Article ten dot eleven and ten dot twelve dot E. The applicant pursuant to ten dot twelve dot E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project. Two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before any permits may be issued, before any construction activities may commence. Three, final approval of the main division of environmental protection must be provided before a building permit can be issued for this project. Four, the applicant shall comply with all terms and conditions of the Town of Kennebunkport Ordinance, as well as Maine DEP approvals dated fourth October twenty-twenty. How dare you yawn in the middle of my presentation?
You did really good. You're a good speed reader. Heck, if you want to read mics.
Did you notice I even, I even pronounced Woolwich correctly?
Okay.
I felt pride when you said that.
Did you?
Yeah.
Are you from the area?
Well, I'm from Maine, so.
Oh, okay, alright. I lived in Bath for ten years and Bodenham before that.
Okay. I'm going to, uh,
Oh.
move approval of that, uh, document as read.
Second.
Approved.
Approved.
Approved. Ed?
Yes, approved.
Okay, next one.
Next one.
Application of Siegler Living Trust Dock Replacement for sixty-three Pier Road. Following site plan reviews pursuant to the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance held on sixteen and six September twenty-twenty-three and a public hearing on the twentieth September twenty-twenty-three, the Kennebunkport Plan, Planning Board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions and renders the following decision subject to the conclusions enumerated below. Findings of fact are as follows. One, the applicant owner of record is Siegler Living Trust with mailing address of sixty-three Pier Road, Kennebunkport, Maine, oh four oh four six. Two, in a letter dated twenty-five April twenty-twenty-three, the owner of record authorized Flycatcher LLC with a mailing address of one oh six Lafayette Street, Yarmouth, Maine, oh four oh four, oh four oh nine six, to act as the agent in this matter. Three, the property has a street address of sixty-three Pier Road, Kennebunkport, Maine, oh four oh four six. Four, the property is identified as map twenty-nine, block two, lot six on the municipal tax assessor's maps. Five, the applicant demonstrated illegal interest in the property by providing a quitclaim deed for the property recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book one five two eight four, pages five thirty-four to five thirty-five on October twenty-fourth, two thousand seven six. The property is located in the Cape Porpoise East Zone and Shoreland Zones and is within a V-zone. Seven, applicant confirmed that the required NRPA application, the MDEP, and the ACOE permit by rule have been requested. Eight, the property comprises approximately thirty-six thousand five hundred square feet per information provided by the applicant and is therefore nonconforming. Nine, in an application dated thirty June twenty-twenty-three, applicant proposes to rebuild an existing nonconforming dock and supporting structures that were destroyed in the storm October twenty-two and removed in the winter of twenty-twenty-two. Ten, the previous dock consisted of an eighty-five foot pier connected to a three foot by twenty foot ramp and an eight foot by ten foot uh, float with an estimated total length of plus or minus one hundred and thirteen feet. Eleven, the previous dock had a width of six feet. Twelve, the new dock will have stairs at the original starting point and will be approximately six foot by six foot. The stairs will connect to a six foot by sixty-eight foot long pier with handrails. The pier will connect to a three foot by thirty-five foot ramp and will use the eight foot by ten foot float. Thirteen, the new dock will be constructed in the same location as the previous dock. Fourteen, the new dock will be elevated by three feet above the elevation of the original dock to reduce the likelihood of future storm damage. Fifteen, the new dock will have an estimated length of plus or minus one hundred and thirteen feet. Sixteen, applicant requested no submission or performance waivers from the requirements of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance. Seventeen, pursuant to the requirements for Article ten dot ten dot A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decision, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings, which would otherwise compel denial. A, the proposed use meets the definition or specific requirement set forth in the Land Use Ordinance and will be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws, finding yes. B, the proposed use will not create fire safety hazards, hazards and will provide adequate access to the site or to the buildings on the site for emergency vehicles, finding yes. C, the proposed exterior lighting will not create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent public streets and is adequate for the safety of occupants or users of the site and will not damage the value and diminish the usability of adjacent properties, finding not applicable. D, the provisions for buffers and onsite landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, finding not applicable. E, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of a budding property as a result of noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust, glare, or other cause, finding yes. F, the provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking for vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and onto adjacent public streets will not create hazards to safety, finding not applicable. G, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the value of adjacent properties, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding not applicable. H, the design of the site will not result in significant flood hazards or flood damage and is in conformance to applicable flood hazard protection requirements, finding yes. I, adequate provision is made for a disposal of wastewater or solid waste and further prevention of ground or surface water contamination, finding not applicable. J, adequate provision is made to control erosion or sedimentation, finding yes. K, adequate provision is made to handle stormwater runoff or other drainage problems on site, finding not applicable. L, the proposed water supply will meet the demands for proposed use or for fire protection purposes, finding not applicable. M, adequate provision is made for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances and materials as defined by state law, finding not applicable. N, the proposed use will not have an adverse impact on significant scenic vistas or significant wildlife habitat, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding yes. O, the proposed use will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion, finding not applicable. P, existing offsite ways and traffic facilities can safely and conveniently accommodate the increased traffic generated by the development as far away from the development as the effects of the development can be traced with reasonable accuracy, finding not applicable. Ooh, that's a good part. When a proposed development will be located within the shoreland zone, in addition to the requirements of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance Article ten, the townwide regulations in Article six, the performance standards for specific activities and land uses in Article seven, approval of the development will also require that the board makes positive findings based on the information presented that, uh, than the proposed use. A, will maintain safe, safe and healthful conditions, finding yes. B, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation of surface waters, finding yes. C, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, not applicable. D, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat, finding yes. E, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of inter, access to inland and coastal waters, finding yes. Comment, the habitat under the new dock is ledge and no intertidal vegetation will be impacted by shading from the dock. F, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan, not applicable. G, will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development and use, finding yes. H, is in conformance with the performance standard set forth in section five dot six, erosion and sedimentation control of the Kennebunkport Land Use Ordinance, finding yes. Any negative findings by the board means the application has been denied. Receipt of an ACOE permit is a condition of approval. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Articles ten dot ten dot A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial and as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to the Article ten dot eleven and ten dot twelve dot E. One, the applicant pursuant to ten dot twelve dot E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project. Two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before any permit may be issued or before any construction activity may commence. The applicant shall also provide the Town of Kennebunkport a copy of the MDEP permit by rule prior to commencing any work. Three, the applicant shall comply with all terms and conditions of the Town of Kennebunkport ordinances, as well as the Maine DEP approvals dated for October twenty-twenty.
Okay. I'll, uh, once again, move acceptance of that, uh, as read.
Well, second.
Okay, I'm in favor.
I, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Ed?
Yes, in favor.
Okay. So, uh, we'll get these signed now. Uh, one thing I forgot before we go completely through is that we don't have an assignee for the Old Cape project. We have a hand raised. All right. A mic is going to do that. Awesome, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna assume it's gonna be an awful lot like Roberts. The Roberts Lane one that was right next door.
Yeah.
Cause that's all we did there was divide up.
Yeah.
Side up.
Okay.
That is a base.
A little light on.
In, in terms of, uh, the, the Old Cape Road, I think, uh, what you suggest is good, especially since, uh, we probably want more than just us, us three to sign those, those things. So we'll, I will read the FOF and we'll approve it. But it will be printed down at Town Hall and we have to sign these, sign the prints also, and so we'll want.
Yeah, April will send an email out to remind people to come down and.
Yeah.
And sign, but.
Yeah, and I'll forget.
So, anyway, let me read this and, uh, let me get these two things, this thing signed here. It's good that it's just not me who forgets.
Oh, God. Going to Town Hall, old summer especially.
So this is, is back to item, uh, two, three, oh, eight, oh, three, fifty-four River Road. Okay. All right. Kenny Bunk, Planning Board Finding of Facts and Decision. Approval of Minor Subdivision Amendment Application, lots two and three, PBM subdivision, Kennebunkport, Maine, to amend the PBM subdivision by changing the boundaries of lots two and three. Following a September twentieth review pursuant to the Kennebunkport subdivision regulations and land use ordinance and a public hearing held on October fourth, twenty-twenty-three, the planning board, Kennebunkport Planning Board makes the following decision. One, findings of fact, as, as follows. One, the property is located in the Village Residential Zone, has an address of fifty-four River Road, Kennebunkport. Two, the applicant is the Thomas W. McLean two thousand nine trust, excuse me, Kennebunkport, Maine, oh four oh four six. The applicant is represented by James Logan, Longview Partners LLC, six Second Street, Buxton, Maine, oh four oh nine three. The property is identified as map one, block one, lots two and three, in the municipal assessor's maps. Five, the owner has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a copy of warrant, of warranty deeds recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds, book six, sixteen four sixty-two, pages four ninety-two to four ninety-six dated November sixteenth, twenty-twelve, and book sixteen eight oh nine, pages three sixty-two to three sixty-four, dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen. The PBM subdivision is recorded to the York County Registry of Deeds, book two hundred, page forty-one, date May thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one. An application dated September two thousand three, the applicant proposes to adjust the lot line between lots two and three, moving thirty-two hundred square feet from lot two to lot three. After the adjustment, lot two would be sixteen, sorry, one point six one two acres and lot three would be one point oh five seven acres. The adjusted lot, lots retain sufficient area to be compliant with zoning requirements. Decision, in accordance with Article seven, eight, and nine of the Town of Kennebunkport subdivision regulations and Title thirty A of MRSA paragraph forty-four oh four, the planning board grants approval of the applicant's final plan application. Conditions of approval. One, the approval must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds within ninety days or it becomes null and void unless an extension is granted by the, the board in writing. Two, the applicant will comply with all terms and conditions of the Town of Kennebunk ordinances and subdivision regulation and all applicable federal and state approvals, as well as those specified in the final application, all of which is incorporated herein by reference, dated for October two thousand twenty-three. So. Just need to approve it.
I make a motion. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sid.
I want to. I make a motion that be approved, as read.
Second then.
Okay, I approve it?
I approve it.
I approve it.
Approved.
Okay, that's four. All right, so, anyway, I think, um, Michelle and April are gonna send out notices to, uh, get everybody to come in and act, sign the physical documents, since finding, signing my iPad doesn't really do it that well. So.
It would make it difficult, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's. I'm sure there's something in iPad OS I could cause this to, to do, but, anyway, so.
We'll make a trip.
Yeah. So, I guess that's it.
That's it.
I'll, I'll, I'll make another motion.
Good, please.
I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, I'm in favor. Thank you for calling in. Ed?
Get well, Ed.
Thank you, thank you, that's the plan.